I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
Somebody out in that.
Do we need to turn this off? Or the sound on that unit?
Testing one, two, three. You have your mute.
One, two, three.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order on Wednesday, April 20th, at 5:35 PM. Could I have a roll call?
Joe Shank, President. Jess Sixt and Duranian, President.
And Veronica Calhoun, President. Please do ring for the flag. I'd like to ring the flag.
Through the flag of the United States of America, and serve your father with his hands, one nation under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded on Zoom. We put on the website later. And it is also live on Channel 9. Chairments additions or deletions under Item 146, review and approve the meetings as available. I have executive session minutes for 1 and 2, 2 and 207. Can we add those to the agenda? And I don't believe I have anything else. Is public comment here? Are there any public comments? Not yet. No, just general public comments. Thank you. See anybody at home? All right, let's go to review and approve the meeting minutes as available. And Ross, we can release these, correct? Approve and release?
Yes, the ones you asked, did I answer them?
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve and also release the executive session minutes for 1/8 2022?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes. Jess Sixt and Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calhoun. All right, the next one is 22.
Move that we approve the executive session for February 2nd, 2022.
And release?
And release.
If there's a second.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't involved.
Second. All right, any further comments? All those in favor?
Jess Sixt and Duranian, yes.
And Calhoun, yes. And then the other one is for 27.
That we approve the executive session minutes for February 7th, 2022 and release.
Second.
Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess Sixt and Duranian, yes.
All right. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing. We're a little bit long at 5.
Excuse me, just a second. We're going to try to vote the ban article.
Oh, we were going to do that.
Out of a head, this is.
Yes.
That'll be quick.
I'm sorry, I had elected to add that. The ban article that we need to sign. The Board of Selectmen needs to sign, and Kathy's here to notarize for us.
This is a bond anticipation note that the treasurer collector has issued, and she's gone out to bid for it. She's got two bids, and the lowest bid is the Newburyport 5 cents. They came in at 1.66%. This is to cover borrowing for remainder of the Water Main project and for the initial work on the bridge replacement. So it would be a total borrowing of $881,200. And this is asking the board to sign this note so we can borrow on a short-term basis.
So is there a motion? Do we need a motion to do this, or can we just sign?
I think a motion to sign bond anticipation note with Newburyport 5 cents savings bank.
And I will also move that.
Is there a second?
Second. We're going to put that under 1.7.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Josh, yes.
Jess Sixt and Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calhoun.
So there's like five places we need to sign. You wouldn't mind signing them, Kathy can witness and step in and help me, but we do that.
Five signatures, correct?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Kathy.
Glad you remembered that, Russ.
Hate to hold up all these folks, but then.
Right, right. All right, so now I would like to open the public hearing for the all-alcohol liquor license with Towns and VFW Post 6538, 491A Main Street, West Townsend, at 5:42 PM. So with that, do we have, let's read the posting that was in the paper.
Madam Chair, legal notice for the town of Townsend for the public hearing stamped into the town clerk's office on March 30th, 2022. In ordinance with the provisions of Chapter 138, Section 15A of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, at 5:35 PM in the Selectmen's Chambers, 272 Main Street, Townsend, Massachusetts. The purpose of the hearing is to act on an application for an all-alcoholic restaurant liquor license for the premises known as Townsend VFW Post 6538, located at 491A Main Street, West Townsend, Massachusetts. All citizens are encouraged to present written or verbal comments prior to or during the hearing.
We have the butter notices that don't stand back.
Yes, those came back and all were received except for the one sent to Commonwealth Masters of Fish and Wildlife. But all of them were sent well.
All right, so the way I'd like to proceed is go through and see if we have everything that we need to have for the application. After that, we did get two verbal letters to be read into the record, which we will do after that. And then if there's anybody from the floor who would like to comment, I'll hang those after that. So any questions on proceeding? All right, so with that said, for our new license, was there a $200 fee paid online?
Yes.
A monetary transmittal form, do we have that?
Yes.
The new retail application?
Yes.
The manager application?
Yes.
The vote of the entity. So I'm assuming that's minutes of a meeting where you voted to apply?
Yes, yes, we have those.
Okay. The business structure documents, since this is a nonprofit, I'm assuming articles of organization?
Correct.
A query authorization form, and this should be one for each individual with financial or beneficial interest in the entity that is applying, and one for the proposed manager of record. This form must be notarized with a stamped or raised seal. So I'm assuming it's the board of directors?
Yes.
For the VFW?
Yes, those were all received.
And manager?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, did you have to do two, Natalie? Or just one? One, yes. I'm learning what to say here. Proof of citizenship for the proposed manager of record, and I read somewhere that needs to be the passport?
Yes, we received a copy of the passport.
I'm just looking at what we had from Town Council.
And for security reasons, we didn't email that around to people, but we have a copy.
That's nice. A legal right to occupy, meaning a lease or a deed for the premises?
We have a deed, indeed. We found several deeds for them granting rights to the Commonwealth Masters of Fish and Wildlife, but we did find the one that grants them the use of that site.
It's not one, I know I saw that. The batteries notifications, we've gone through that already. The advertisement we went through. Additional information if necessary, utilizing the formats provided and/or any affidavits?
We've gone through the list, and I've checked with Town Council. Issues that he thought were missing yesterday have been corrected. So other things on that list and on his list have been covered for.
That's right. And did we get a progress back from Department heads?
Got no objections from the Department.
So. Right, the Town Council, then, that's everything. But what about the last board?
Sorry, my last board is?
Management agreement, if applicable? Part of the entity, court forms? Or is this different from what we've already done? The same thing?
Same thing, yes.
All right, so the applications, okay. Any questions?
I think, are there any batters here? Do you want to hear from the batters, or?
Should I read the letters that we received first into the record? Or should we go with in-person?
In-person.
Okay, all right, so the batteries comments. I would think now is the time. There were, I thought I saw one. One, two, so two, three.
And would you mind identifying yourself? Would you address when you speak? We should have a sign-in sheet, right, public hearing?
We should.
Absolutely. We need a sign-in sheet. We have public speaking.
We'll just wait a minute for that and get that circulated.
Whoever's going to speak, just sign. Yeah, he's going to come out, just sign, and pass it to the next person. Yeah, you've already gone by that one. At 5:45. Yeah.
Just identify yourselves and your address.
So I'm Nicholas Colonen, 495 Main Street. Box right up against the VFW.
I think I have a letter there.
Read that first, it's pretty much what? It's pretty much us. We both, we kind of both wrote it. But our biggest issue is for the past at least two years, they haven't had a liquor license. The ADCC actually put away from them because of the previous manager that was running it for them. And they have continued to serve alcohol. I, in that email that I sent, there's emails going back and forth between me and Sergeant on the Police Department with evidence showing that they have been serving alcohol and using their trash and buying it from New Hampshire and not having a distributor distribute it like it should under all the laws. With a license, you can't buy alcohol from New Hampshire and bring it over state lines and sell it. And I, it's just blatant disrespect. I've had issues. There's no one to go to. Picture issues. People come and go 800 miles an hour through our properties. They throw beer bottles over the fence into my backyard. They throw beer bottles and nip bottles all over the property and everything just is a disrespect to the neighbors. They don't clean up, they don't try to clean up, they don't flush. Anytime we go to talk to them, yep, 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 we'll fix it, we'll take care of it, and nothing ever changes, and it just gets brushed over the rug. I know Natalie's the commander. My mom has had words with her. She stood up and almost fought my mom. My mom's a wounded veteran with two tours in Iraq. I am a veteran family. My sister served two tours in Iraq. I don't want to see anything happen to them. I want them to open legally, if it can be. And I want rendered if they're going to continue to operate illegally. I need, I need to make sure that my property's protected, their property's protected. They need to have bartenders that are certified to serve alcohol, not just uncertified alcohol, like people serving alcohol not knowing when someone's had enough. So when they come through my property or the Smart's property, leaving, I don't want someone to get killed knowing that no one's certified to serve alcohol. I know you got to get dip certified to be a bartender and all that stuff. So it's just, it's the blatant disrespect that I don't feel that they should deserve to get their license. And again, they don't help fix. They've said that they put signs up for two years of speeding and respect neighbors. They haven't. They, they also helped destroy the driveway. Me and the Smarts have tried to repack it and regrade it so it's all smooth for them as well as us. And they didn't even thank us. Not even like, hey, we can't help you, but thank you. Like, it's, it's our veterans that are coming in that are older, going through bottles that are most small, 4.350. They don't even thank us for just the minor things. And it's just, again, the disrespect.
We're going to, next to come up.
Other comments? Yes.
Dr. Ross, for all of the, when we put the front atomic company to about the VFW, we, and I have been told that statements that we do want to see is that there is a liquor license. And we do want to make sure that it runs within the standards that are set in the Massachusetts, but we're very confident with Natalie and the relationship that they have, that that will happen. And we give it till possible.
Thank you.
John Mortimer, Main Street.
Could you repeat your name?
John Mortimer.
John Mortimer.
I'm just here for all.
Thank you.
Has everybody signed that sheet just talked? Pass it up here.
Is this progress sign? Is that the VFW?
Yeah.
Is this just if you're speaking?
Yeah. No, well.
Everybody, everyone that's in this room, just sign.
Everybody present.
Are there any other comments? Then should I read the letters?
Well, I think the first letter was just a question, okay?
You can read it if you guys want.
I think you've covered, you've covered the gist of what's in that letter.
Yeah, you did. She asked me to read it into the record, though.
It can be added to the record.
As long as it's added, that's fine. Save some time, guys, if it's not.
That's covered.
Yeah, as long as it's added, that's fine.
All right. And then we've had a second one.
Jeff and Carolyn Smart.
Correct, yeah. Do you want to read it, or do you want me to? To whom it may concern? This is from Carolyn Smart. Please accept this email as our comments for the VFW Post number 6538 Alcohol License Hearing on April 20th, 2022. As we understand, a club license can only be used to serve a VFW member and their guests. We would like to request one town official that we may contact in the event we have any issues such as serving non-members or over occupant capacity so that a complete file made be kept. As agreed upon with the previously held license, all bartenders were chip certified with ongoing training. This agreement was made as a result of a terrible accident in which a patron had left the VFW and had been over-served. It is our hope the Board of Selectmen will honor this agreement as a condition of this license as well. We would request the town requires a condition of the license, all appropriate insurances to include liquor liability and general liability insurance. And I think on that last one, we did talk about that, did we not? And that is something that will be in place. General liability and liquor liability insurance. All right, any other comments?
Some of the VFW would just put a batters.
Then any more batters, then I think the VFW could comment.
I think Jeff Smart. The only thing I want to add to that about the overcapacity is when you rented the building by the functions, we have, in the past, had so many problems with people parking all over our yards and everything. When the previous manager was there, she did an outstanding job keeping that happening. Essentially left, it's just, it's gotten out of control again. And sometimes it's way, way too much for that area to handle. We've been to the board about it, it's on a global base, nothing ever happens. So that's something I really want some sort of restrictions.
So I guess my, my comment on that would be, it would seem to me that you guys could work it out and put up.
So that's my problem is that. I've been to the board, I've been there 30 years, and this has been a problem.
Which board are you talking about?
Tell me. I, I've had to talk to people several times. And nothing gets resolved, so that was, that's my biggest issue, that and the liability insurance, because it's asked on my property to go in and out.
Is there an easement? For the driveway?
Yeah, it's my property.
Right, but they have the right to go through?
Yes, the VFW members. And again, it's not open to the public, and the public does not, technically does not have access across my driveway.
But a guest could.
A guest can, yes.
Okay.
These, these concerns can be addressed in the conditions you put onto the license. That's how you choose.
All right. Any other comments? So then, VFW?
My name is Russ Moore. I think one master of the VFW three different times. I was asked approximately two and a half to three years ago to come in and try to fix the books for the last time. The person that was there didn't do the job very well, didn't pay the local people, didn't pay anybody to pay sales tax. In the last two and a half years, we have paid all of those people. We have brought everything up to date. And the VFW has been in existence for 75 years. I've been a member there for 50 years. And we have had very little trouble. We've had a little bit of trouble, and we take care of it right away if there isn't. We had somebody that came in there recently. And when he left, he, he had a an ambulance that he put into a motorhome for himself. And when he left out of the yard, he put the siren on it, nine or 10 o'clock, it might have been at 12. Soon as we found out about that, he was banned from coming to the building. He was just visiting up here from North Carolina. And that's one of the issues that we had. With a, with a operation like this, you, you don't go without having any issues. But I'd like to rebut some of the, some of the comments from the neighbors. Yes, what they say is almost all of it is true. One thing that we did do is we were asked to put signs up by mile and hour speed limit. And we had those signs made, and we gave it to the batters. And they haven't been put up yet. We'll be happy to put them up. We don't want anybody driving through their yards at 800 miles an hour. People do think that 5 miles an hour speed limit is a little bit low. I personally don't think it's a little bit low. I think they should respect our neighbors and do it that way. And we do urge people in the post to do that. I hope that we can make a better thing with the, with the neighbors so that we can get along with them a little better. We're definitely willing to work, meet with them. There's been some, some issues from, from both sides. They're not wrong, we're not wrong. It's just some issues that came about. Police were called a few times, and those were all settled. I think that we've, we've had a license there for at least the 50 years that I know of. We have it in, in the house that we used to own up front to begin with, and then it was moved out to the property where it is now. I wasn't a member for the first 25 years that we were in existence, so I don't know if they had. I know they had that license when we, when we, when I went into the post. So we just, we just want to get back open. We're, we use the building, town boards, use, not town boards, town people. We, we have Cub Scouts in there, we have Boy Scouts in there. We have the Lions Club meets in there, and any, any other town organization that needs a place to, to meet, we allow them to meet in there. We don't try. So I just want to say that we have quite a few of our veterans here, and we just want to open back up again so we can keep the building. If we can't open back up again, we won't be able to keep the building. If we can't open back up again, we won't be able to keep the building. And it's been there for a long, long time.
Any, any other comments from the floor?
One more thing, real quick, if no one else wants to. So he says he tries to fix issues. No one has come to me to fix any of our issues. He drives by, they all drive by, they don't look at me. I try to talk to him, I stop what I'm doing, hoping one of them will stop and talk to me. He says he's trying, they don't. And that's our biggest thing is we would like my wife, my wife doesn't want us out of the house because of the blatant disrespect. She wants to move. Like, she doesn't feel safe there with people driving through nine thirty at night, not knowing how drunk they are, if they are even drunk. Because they have meetings all the time and we don't know. And that's the thing. And it's just, it's when my wife wants to sell the house, I, I get angry. And a lot of the issues was me getting angry a year and a half ago. And I have yet to, I've stopped and I've tried to fix it with every single one of them. And no one comes and fixes it. No one tries. Natalie doesn't even look at me when she drives by. None of them look at me and it's all retaliation with us. They try to hurt me, they try to get me to get mad and they try to do all this stuff. So no one tries to fix anything from the VFW. They promised me they would put signs up right at the entrance. Respect our neighbors, private property, no parking over here. They gave Jeff signs that have their name all over it. We're not going to put their name all over our private property. All we asked for was speed limit signs and signs saying, respect our neighbors. So them saying we gave them to Jeff to put up and has VFW names all over it. That's going to show that everyone already thinks Jeff's driveway, my driveway, the VFW wants. And that's not the case. I've gotten into a screaming match with someone that almost hit a little kid at my house because they were driving through it so aggressively. I'd like to rebut that if I may.
Nick? Did I stop and talk to you just within the last week?
You stopped and talked to me and told me that you guys put in your, uh, for your application and you want to see me down here and that you were leaving in June. That's what you told me and I told you it was the best thing for you.
And you didn't do one of that, I didn't ever talk to you and I didn't ever talk to Jeff.
Uh, before the whole issue with the ambulance? You didn't. After that, for the longest time, you didn't.
It also says that we're selling liquor in there illegally. We do not sell it, we're in there since we lost our license. It's BYOB. I talk to people in the town about that, they don't have any BYOB license. So we assume that it was okay to do that. We do not sell beer, well, or liquor or anything else.
Russell Jobe, uh, speaking on behalf of the VFW, that passed, uh, post command, uh, I've been here, I've lived in town for seventeen years and been a member for fourteen years. I was there and I was present when the license was voted by us. We returned in October, this is two, two months before COVID technically shut down everything anyway. Uh, regardless, when COVID shut us down, we would give up our liquor license. Because in order to keep it, you got to pay liquor liability. You got approved to the state to not buy liquor elsewhere. It's just, and we could not stay open. But that's true, that, you know, that's, that's one reason why we're coming back to do this. We have done a lot of renovations to our function hall. To try to help us generate more money, give somebody other, another place to, to rent. And after we did that, we ended up giving up our liquor license. That kind of set us back and that's, that, that has backed me in COVID. So that's the reason we're, we're trying to get back open. Uh, for the issues, I've talked to Jeff, I've talked to, uh, everyone there. I don't, I don't have any problems with what they're saying. I've seen it, I've stopped people from doing it. Uh, however, at the same time, we have, uh, figured out a lot of problems there. Three, four years before I started, uh, going up to the state office, we had gotten rid of at least, and I personally signed paperwork banning and barring fifteen people forever for doing drugs on the property. For, for doing all sorts of things. And before that, it was kind of hard, but we took care of it. Getting it out, working with the police department. And, uh, we, we, we've come along with it. So we've had a little setbacks, it's been seventy five years. I can see where there's setbacks needing to be replaced. So I think, uh, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get back into being a part of the community again, like we're supposed to. And, uh, hopefully the community will be a part of us like, like they have been in the past, as we're supposed to.
Thank you.
Yep. And, uh, I do maintain property there. I come in bonds, I take care of the memorial, the VFW memorial up front. Um, I do it on a biweekly basis, just about, uh, unless like Moore is broke or something. So we do take care of the grounds there as best we can with just a few people that we have. So we do try and keep it up and keep the place safe. Jeff can.
Well, I just want to make one thing clear, I'm not against them getting a license and opening it, same here. A side of our concerns that we stated, those are things I want to address. I'm all for the VFW having a license, if not my intention. And he, he takes care of it, I helped him out, he helped me out and we all can get along. So it's just a few concerns that I have. But I'm, I'm not opposing them getting a license. I'm saying the main, the concerns.
I just want to say that building doesn't only house the VFW, it includes the legion.
State in law?
John Bobo. Sorry, Bobo.
That's okay.
It houses the legion and DAP. So if we lose that building, all three of us are going to be out on the street.
One, one, one other comment, if I can. Um, it's just that you had mentioned something about liquor liability and, and general liability. Um, I, when we applied for the license, told our insurance company to add liquor liability at that time. So we have a full insurance for everything. And we do have all of the people who are standing certified, um, bartenders are going to be in there, we're standing certified them on, on tips already. We will, everybody will be certified before we open.
Thanks. Time for select board comments and.
I speak, Madam Jeff. First of all, I want to congratulate and thank every one of you veterans for serving our country. And I think as a community, we have to make sure we support the veterans, all of them, American Legion, every one of them. I can personally say I've driven past that VFW when it was in the old building fifty years ago. Okay? Unfortunately, now Mr. and Mrs. Smart own it. However, what we need to do as a community, we all go through humps and we all go through ups and downs, as Russ said. You know, some people can just take an entire organization and throw it upside down. However, we need to do what we need to do and support the VFW, we need to open it up. I understand some of your concerns, Mr. Smart understands some of your concerns. However, one thing we don't want to lose sight of, when you bought your building, you bought your house, you knew that building was there. Okay, I've sat in this community for over fifty years and I've seen this. I've seen it and I've watched it play through, that people come in, they buy their property and they don't like what's going on behind them. However, that's part of just life. If you buy something and it's there, you can't expect it to go away, it's not magically going to happen. I do agree, if you have a speeding problem in your property, I think that's something the VFW should really make sure of. And Mr. Jobe, you, you mentioned that you did get rid of some of them people. I can personally say I've probably witnessed some of them days and some of those people. However, it's the right thing that had to be done and you did. I think the VFW needs to get opened, I think we need to give them their license. I think we need to make sure we protect the VFW and the neighbors. However, I don't want to put such restrictions on the VFW that they can't operate and be at least reasonably operating, because everyone knows, Mr. Smart, you have your own business, have. We know owning a business right now or being part of a business is very difficult. So every single thing that someone adds on to a corporation or business is another burden. And I am pretty sick and tired of seeing the government and everybody just keep adding things to us. So my opinion is we need to move forward, address some of the couple of the concerns that you have. By all means, your wife and you should be protected, no one should be speeding. Mr. Smart, they should go sm- slow on your property, absolutely. I would recommend highly the VFW, sit with them, get appropriate signs and make it right. You guys got to have people coming, going and you're going to have people coming all hours of night. They don't need to be woken up, they don't need to listen to sirens blaring, none of that. I did read your wife's letter, I see there are some concerns as far as all the pitchers of all the beers and cans. Well, I think Russ said it right there, yeah, they're in the barrel, they're there, but they're bringing your own. There's a lot of places that bring your own beer into a facility, don't mean they have to sell it. So I don't think we should criticize them.
And with, if they get the license.
Yes, and that, and I don't, like I said, I bought, I bought my house because of that.
Yeah.
I'm a veteran family, they're the reason we bought the house.
I think we can address some of the concerns in, in conditions. I mean, it's cut the board short, but I think we can, we can address all the concerns.
You have anything to say?
Uh, I would like a point of order. I mean, you're, you're taking public comment, which is what we need to do. And then, um, you're, are, are we asking for the board to deliberate or are we, you know, what, what's, that's what I'm, yes.
Okay, do you have any questions for that before we do that?
I do not.
I have a question. Um, how do you monitor the members? How do you know that the people that are coming in are actually members and or guests of members?
We, at, at the bar on the way in, there's a, there's a guest sheet and people that are not members are asked to sign that guest. And a member has to certify that they're, they're guests. We keep those, we have those, I don't know, we, we must have.
Two years.
At least two years of, of those there. The last two years we haven't used them because there's, there's nothing being served. But when we do that, we, we do have a guest book there. And we have asked the police to come in and check that before and they've actually come into the bar with our invitation and they look over that list and then they, so we've asked them to do that, just, just to cover it and make sure we're doing the right thing.
So I, I have a question for you, Matt.
Yes.
So what, um, what qualifies as adequate traffic control?
I mean, just the respect, I mean, it's.
It's the speed and, and our parking on, in our property, that, no, that's just. But I'm going to contradict myself because I told them if it's got anything to do with the veterans or the elderly, I don't mind. Because they, they don't have a ton of parking over there. So the only other place is that overflow across the pond. So if it comes down to a veteran or an elderly function, I don't mind if they're in my yard. It's when they have the.
A wedding or a funeral of. I mean, I hate to say a funeral or just a party in general.
They rent the, the pavilion out, it gets really crowded and then you find it all, that head park again, that's the biggest thing. And, and I got people walking through my yard, there's foot traffic is not allowed. And I've asked them a million times, I've got to stop people from going all through my stuff, you know? That's not too much to ask.
So, so I, I guess I'm gonna, um, good fences make good neighbors. Uh, does wood fencing work to define the, that safe?
No.
Did I comment?
Yes, give your name and.
All demand, a park owner, I'm also commander of the DAP chapter. Um, a suggestion, yeah, of overflow parking is, I mean, they don't speed up signs. Yeah, that's a separate, but, um, potentially overflow parking signs directing overflow people back.
That's not my responsibility.
No, I'm, no, I'm not saying, no, I'm suggesting we, the veterans organizations, because we consider ourselves a veterans council, have signs potentially to say overflow parking and would direct people, some, then we take responsibility to try to direct as many people as possible out to the overflow. What do you mean?
But if you park a, a, a Boy Scout, don't hey, don't park here. Have the kid stand out there for juice box. I mean, something, I, I mean, we just.
Something to direct them.
Like we, how many of you guys overflow parking?
Yeah, when you, when you, sorry, you need to.
All right, yeah. It's directed this way. So, but, but that is the thing I'm trying to get at, like what's condition?
As one, one of the alterations that can be ready to resolve.
I think we have something we can all talk about.
Well, we're going to put conditions on it. So, um, I would want to know that the resolution is something that works for both.
His suggestion would be just fine. But, I mean, that, that, and like I said, the, one of the previous managers was outstanding at controlling that sort of thing. And, um, it's just, she's gone and go by the wayside and just got, you know, I'm going back to the old way.
So what was good about what she did?
Well, Madam Chairman, I have point of order. Our, our objective here is to have a public hearing in regards to that. Um, the, the main focus here is whether or not the license is going to be granted, is that not correct?
Uh huh. I'm trying to get at what the conditions are.
We can, we can, we can, we can discuss that when we are after the motion.
With the people that are here, because that's not generally how it works. No new input after you close the hearing.
Right, we, we close the public hearing and the board can deliberate on well, the license and or conditions.
I, I agree, but I want to make sure that the conditions are ones that are acceptable to everybody. I, I agree with that. But I, what are you guys looking for as far as?
Again, that's, that's not, I don't believe that that is part of our, what we're doing here.
We should be talking about given.
We can set conditions that they can work that out on their, on their own. I don't think we should be, be.
I mean, that's fine, if you guys want to set a condition that we can all sit down and further date, I know it's about their license. It isn't a, a back and forth contest where, where it's about their license. And I mean, I don't mind if they have their license, I just need conditions to protect me and my family.
And that's my point. My point is that the, it's the, the, the issues that you're discussing now is not about the license, it's about the, the parameters around the license.
It's about the conditions of on the license, which.
I, I think we've heard.
Okay.
You want to know what the issues are?
All right.
Aye, aye.
One quick comment. We have talked to the neighbors about this. Um, we were out there not too long ago and Jeff asked if we could put some rocks around to keep people from parking on that property. And I, I suggested that that's a good idea and he did that. So that's, that, that's where they were parking that was, that was causing most of the trouble. Um, um.
Mostly part of the board.
Jeff, did you?
Everybody knows that.
Yes, and that's, that's my property that we put the rocks on.
My, yes.
Go ahead and then we're going to stop conversation, Jeff, go ahead, you were talking before.
The only thing I would like on, to be listed in a record of any kind is that we get, um, then always get a current property of their insurance, just to bind their, um, releasing me from any damage or they're going to occur.
That, that'll be in the, in the select board's office and.
Right.
You can.
Have one to that, that. Yeah, no, I don't think we make an exception.
Okay. Are we ready to close for a couple of comments then?
Uh huh.
Is there a motion to? Um.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Remove that we close the public hearing?
Okay.
Any further comments from the board? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And, um. Thank you all.
How do you want to deliberate on the license and motions while you're here?
Um, I do, and you guys are welcome.
License, right? Yep, yep. So we have to make, take a vote before we go.
License, right? Yep, yep. So we have to make, take a vote before we're going to approve the license, and then set some parameters to protect everybody. And just get it done.
Before we start on the license.
So, suggested conditions?
I have my list. No, go ahead. You go first.
I think this is also state requirement, but all the bartenders need to be TIPS certified.
Okay, that's on my list. I agree.
All servers and including management should.
Um, they need to be, have the proper insurance, liability insurance, alcohol insurance. We need to have that certificate in, in town hall.
Okay, that's on my list. And that is something that Alex said as well, a liquor liability insurance certificate.
Um, and then the big one is, the VFW needs to control noise, speeding, trash, parking on others' property, including controlling, um, walking, driving on other people's property, and basically show respect for a butter's property. And I'm not going to define how that's done. That needs to be worked out between the VFW and the residents on that street. But they have to understand they're running a social activity in a residential district, and they need to respect the neighbors accordingly. Doesn't mean they can't operate, it just means.
Okay, so here's my comment on that. What I think might be respectful, the other person may not think it is. And that's why I think it should be more well-defined than not. In other words, you, you can say, ah, well, the VFW has been a controller. And they will say, we've controlled them. And then the abutters will say, oh, no, they haven't. And that's where you wind up with this. So I think there needs to be something a little more well-defined. VFW needs to control noise, speeding, trash, and show respect to the neighbors, parking as well. Um, but what, how does that look? What does that look like? That's what I think, um, needs to be a little bit more.
Slope when you try to define it, because what is noise?
And I mean, that's why, I mean, I, I live next to a bar. I'm not.
Point of, point of order, the, the hearing is closed. We can't accept any comments from that. Sorry.
No, I just, I, I'm not, I, I get it.
It's a slippery slope trying to describe what is like too noise. I think it's a function of what the abutters accept and what a reasonable person would consider acceptable. So if it's too noisy, there's a complaint that gets called to the police department, and the police goes down, police department will go down, and they'll say, either quiet down or we think it's, what's happening is reasonable. Um, the same with speeding. If people are speeding, they ought to be a call into the police department that says people are speeding on the street. If there's parking, and you can clearly show where you delineated VFW property and a butter's property, so maybe there needs to be some no parking signs.
So I, I could, so I can agree with that. Property delineated for parking and signage in place.
So I guess, Madam Chair, I'm going to say that Mr. Smart and.
Colonnade, it's all right.
Nick, Nick have agreed that the post have had great people there doing exactly what they want and expect. So what I would say we do is we put this back on the, the VFW, say, we've heard their concerns, the parking, as you said, everything, and just make sure that they fulfill it. You know, I mean, I, I think to reinvent the wheel here right now is not the way to go.
I'm not reinventing the wheel. I am merely saying that I think it needs to be, I could, the noise, okay, noise and respect, that kind of goes together. The police can handle that. But I think it should be pretty well-defined as far as the property is delineated for parking, so the people know where they can park and where they can't, and that there needs to be signage in place regarding speed.
They, they gave signs that aren't up yet. So, I mean, I don't know what else someone can do. So I would say, Jeff, if you have signs, or the VFW, if you got signs, get them up. You know, that's the only way you're going to fix something is if you have something there. Put it in black and white, let the people see it, and then if there's still a problem, then deal with it.
I will caution you that private placement of speed signs are probably not, are not enforceable. I don't think you can put up a five mile per hour sign and then call the police and say they're speeding ten miles.
Hopefully, maybe it's not enough to go five miles an hour.
Sure.
I asked all the officers about how many people go, never mind. I think advising people to go slower is great. I just want, don't want false expectations.
And when I go to Russ, and I want something fixed, I'd like it that fixed. If I go to Natalie, and I need something fixed, that's what I want. That's, that's what we're asking for, is someone that we can go to. That's, maybe that's the condition to put on. Give us someone that we can go to fix the problem.
There should be somebody on site at all times that there's a party or activity, I guess, that you can call and contact to fix them. Okay, so if the VFW provides that name of person that you can call to say, hey, there's people parked in my yard, or there's too noisy, you've got a place to call before you have to try to call the police or town hall. And so a condition, added condition is, needs to be a name, a name, I do, point of contact.
On site.
On site, whenever there's an.
I just, I need someone to call and talk to that will fix the problem. That's my biggest concern.
Okay, so, um.
And, and then I think we, we monitor it and see how it goes. And the licenses are issued annually, right?
Yes.
So the next time this comes up is probably next December. The board can decide whether, I think, the conditions being met, or whether added conditions need to be put on there.
All right, so, do we have a, a vote?
I haven't been allowed to say anything. Number one is what I see all of this boiling down to is respect and responsibility have been said at least 15 times in this conversation. All right. I don't believe that we, um, that we should insert ourselves. I think that both the abutters and the VFW need to work together to come up with something agreeable between the two of them and, um, come up with, with some set of, of rules and regulations on their own with whatever they need to do. I don't feel it right for us to put conditions on something like this, uh, without mu- mutual agreement with everybody. Um, the, the, the goal here is to get the, the liquor license to allow the, the VFW to continue in operation. Um, we're all in agreement with that. What we're not in agreement with is the part that deals with respect and responsibility. I think the, the, the parties involved need to come up with a set of criteria, whether it be the manager of, of the bar is, is to notify the abutters when you're having a function and, you know, walk around the property, whatever they decide to do, I think is completely on them. Or what I feel that we need to do is that the conditions that have been agreed upon between the VFW and the abutters, when they are not met, or there is an issue, to set some sort of, uh, remedy, uh, for that. That's what I, I'm hearing is the major problem, is there's no remedy to any problems that they have. So that's how I see it.
And I see it as, if we don't at least put some conditions on it, there is nothing that, we're always looking at remedies.
Well, I'm saying the conditions will be, you know, that they need to work together to.
And if they don't.
That's the remedy that I'm talking about.
And then if they don't.
And then they bring, and then they bring it back to the board.
Then the next license.
Because we are responsible for, we're, we're responsible for the license ultimately, correct? If there, if there has been, if there has been an entity that's not following the, the rules and regulations of, of holding a license, are we not the, the place to, to pull a license if we need to? If there were, if there were issues with it?
The license is screened by the ABCC.
Right.
And we are the local licensing authority. So we have everything.
So, I, I just, our conditions, and they, and we feel that they're not being met, one, you could not renew the license next December, or no, it does, but potentially you could revoke it after a hearing, after another public hearing.
Another public hearing for it.
Yes. And usually the way those go is you hear a set of complaints, and you add another set of conditions.
And that's, that's.
You just want to.
No, I didn't say I didn't want to set conditions. I said, the conditions need to be agreed upon between them before we set them. That's what I said.
I disagree with you.
I, I'm going to agree with you, Ross, or Russ, yeah. Chaz, I, I just think if we start setting all these conditions on licenses in the town of Townsend, where, where are we going to go with this? We're going to start at the, the liquor licenses, then we're going to go to repair facilities, then we're going to go to, you know, mom and pop PC lane running a business. I think that issue, which we've heard loud and clear, really needs to be worked out right there. You guys, you're all big boys and girls, get together, figure it out. If there's an issue, if it doesn't work, the board, may not be me, but the board's going to sit here. They're going to have to renew your license. And if you piss these people off, they're going to come the next meeting, and they're going to say, well, we kind of said this is what you need to do. Why ain't you doing it?
Well, I'm just saying you don't have anything measurable there. And I don't see where it extends from one thing to the next.
And with respect, sincerely, you can't expect, go work it out. Because with respect to, to all the abutters, I have seen abutters in other cases who are crazy and unreasonable. And look for conditions on a business that, that aren't realistic. I'm not suggesting that's your, your issue, but I don't think you can say that they don't please the abutters, go back and work it out. I mean, that's a nice idea. But I think conditions, controlling noise, speeding, trash, respecting people's properties so you're parking on the right place, those are conditions. And so, okay, you're not adhering to it, you're allowing people to park on someone's front yard. That's, that's breaking that condition.
Right. And, and if, if these can't be marked out, they can bring it back to the board.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying.
The, the, some sort of scope of conditions. I don't think we're going to spell out right now. You can park exactly here and not here, you know, that's to be worked out.
But I think we need to say that that's something that needs to be.
That gives, that gives the abutters something to come back and say, you told them not to park on private property, they're parking on private property. There's a violation.
Number four?
Yes.
We're on a meeting at seven.
So.
Seven is the hard stop. Another meeting, we better try to get through. Um, I think the conditions are pretty straightforward. But asking them to always work it out with the abutters, I don't think solves. I mean, I think that's the best goal, is for them to work it out. But when that doesn't happen, there needs to be something that the board two months, three months, six months, or a year from now can look at and say, are they meeting the criteria or not?
But then I would say that the conditions are, all servers and management are certified with tips. That, um, we have the liquor liability insurance certificate in hand here at town hall. Um, that, um, there is a point of contact, someone on site at the VFW that the neighbors are aware of, so that if there is a problem, they can go there. I would also say that the VFW, the VFW and the abutters need to, um, discuss noise, speed, trash, and be respectful.
That's pretty fair. That's pretty fair.
And if, if there are any, um, discrepancies or disputes, and it cannot be resolved between both parties, because here's the thing, we all need to get along, we all know that, all right? But I don't, I, I, I think that it's important for, for all parties to respect the, the property, um, of, of our, our residents. More importantly, I also believe that, um, if we can work this out and be amicable, that's the best situation for all. Everybody's going to be happy. If there is any, any, um, disputes, and it feels, they feel that they can't resolve it to bring it back to the board of select. Because I want some resolution to your, your issues and Mr. Smart's issues. If there's a problem and you don't feel heard, you should always have something that you can be heard.
That's how we want.
Yep.
Yeah, just, let's get through this one. So we got the tips, the license in hand at town hall, point of contacts, insurance, yeah, license and insurance, point of contact on site, and VFW and abutters to.
Noise, speeding, trash, parking.
Yeah, work all that out amicably. If more signs need to be blocked by the VFW, whatever you got to do, you got to get them to them so they can get them up. And like Ross says, I, I don't think.
Approve each other's signs before you get them and spend some money on them so that everybody's in agreement.
And just move on. And be able to go over and have a beer when you want. Just got to be invited by one of them.
My mom remember.
Perfect.
All right, so is there a vote to bring the liquor license?
Madam Chair, I move to approve an all alcohol liquor license for the Townsend VFW, Post 6538, located at 491A Main Street, West Townsend, Massachusetts.
Second. With the.
Conditions. With the conditions as discussed.
As we just discussed. Second.
Anything else? No? All right, others in favor?
Joshank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Congratulations. Don't let us down.
I just want to thank the people who like to stand up neighbors.
We have a couple of things here to be voted for highway, what? We have Honeyland Farms, we're not going to have to create a lot of vehicles.
No.
Um, I'm not going to do the appointments, we can do them on Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, street closure. So I want to do those because I don't know. Um, we can hold off on the antique car round. It's just the road opening permits for gas service. So is there a motion to, um, approve the road opening permits for gas service at 21 Apple Drive and 23 Apple Drive?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Can we just do the two appointments? That's easy, right?
Um, no, I'm not going to do those right now. We'll do them on next week.
Thank you.
Looking for the road openings. All right, we're ready to begin the next one. If you guys would come for the survey.
Open the public hearing for them.
Yeah.
Mind if I sign and sheen?
Oh, no, did everybody get the, yeah, circulated, yes, please.
Have the folder for them, for the Honeyland Farms.
Well, maybe not, it might be the other one that's in there. We'll go with that one. It's the other one that's behind Katie's desk.
Ah, you're doing. Wonderful, thank you. Yeah, no, I'm good.
I see the works getting down behind you with.
Yeah, John, really nice job, beautiful job, amazing. Be a great asset when it's all done. I put the N C on.
The heat was on in the in the.
Take a minute, but it's not cool.
Oh, it's clearing.
I don't even notice, so.
Cool job. I'm trying to bring you guys.
All right, so um uh again, I'm calling to order the public hearing for a wine and malt beverage license for Honeyland Farms at two fifty-one Main Street in Townsend. Uh, we're opening the public hearing at six forty-five. All right, so the notice, do you have that to read, Chaz?
Yes. Madam Chair, the legal notice for the Town of Townsend Public Hearing stamped at the clerk's office, March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. In ordinance with the provisions of chapter one thirty-eight, section fifteen A of the Massachusetts General Laws, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, at five forty-five P M in the selectman's chambers, seven seventy, I'm sorry, two seventy-two Main Street, Townsend, Mass. The purpose of the hearing is to act on an application for a wine wines and malt beverage license for the premises known as Honeyland Farms located at two fifty-one Main Street, Townsend, Massachusetts. All citizens were encouraged to present written or verbal comments prior to or during the hearing. I have not received anything in writing. Have you received anything in writing?
In writing from?
Any, any comments?
Abutters?
Yeah.
No, I have not, but are there abutters here? Okay, so there are abutters present. So um I I did not for this hearing, I see that. So, all right, so just, I'm gonna give you this, Ross, because you want more. All right, so we do have all the abutters cards, I see there are the notifications paid off. Um, the two hundred dollar payment fee.
Yes.
Um, the monetary transmittal form, I didn't see that chat. Did you do that online?
It should be the second.
These forms all now look similar. Okay, we have a monetary submittal form.
Do you need a copy of that?
I'm purchasing.
You have one. All right, a new retail application. Some manager application. Um, both of the entities, if they said. Um, business factors, this is self-qualified, higher than check or. For a corporation. The corporation. Um, and do you know our organization then?
Something from the. Secretary of Commerce.
Okay.
Off, I assume, too.
That's, that would be that. Okay. Um, core organization?
Yes.
Um, citizenship for the proposed manager of records.
Yes.
Supporting financial records for all financing and or loans. And if there's something that supports that?
Um, there's no, no loans against the property, there's. I guess I'm giving an informative statement.
I I don't know.
Yeah, it's not pledged, it's not encumbered.
Legal right to occupy, Lisa Lee Juan.
Yes.
Abutters notifications, which we already discussed, uh, the advertisement, which we already discussed. Any additional information? All right, so everything has been ordered then, all right?
Turn that on A C, it gets hotter, so just leave it on. Yeah, open the windows. Yeah, I know, and I had it on A C and it was getting warm, so that ain't working.
Or they didn't switch it, it's one of those.
Yeah, they didn't switch it downstairs.
At this point, I'm, has everybody gotten the sign and sheen? So I guess I would want comments from abutters. Are there any comments from the abutters?
I don't know more about the store, um, I respect their business.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your name.
Um, I respect their store and their their businesses they have. Um, I I am again for the license. Um, I feel that we have a package store within half a mile down the road. We have another one at Hannover, we have one at the Townsend, I mean, at the Hannovers, we have another one down in Townsend. Um, liquor store in the nation, I think there are plenty of liquor stores uh in the town Townsend at this point. Um, I already have a number of nibs bottles and earphones and and wrappers and you name it floating around my property because I'm just at that point where they're finished, just before the curtain, and that's where it all ends up on my yard. I'm not the only one, my neighbors feel the same way, I've spoken with almost all of them. Um, it's right next door to the church, um, has a charter center. It's also has recovery meetings for recovering alcoholics two days a week. And there's also the North Mill Sex Care, which is on the other side of the driveway, that is for addiction. I don't think that promotes the image that we need at this point. I think we have enough places to buy liquor, and I think, I'm not a false believer, but I think that we have enough places to do that without, and then I also look at the traffic. I frequently, I'm turning right off one nineteen to come down Brookline Street, and people are coming out of the parking lot there on the side, but they never look. And they just cut across so that they can go to the other side to make the right, to go back onto the high key. So they're not, they're not being respectful of stopping and looking, they just go. It's a, it's a bad corner, it's a bad corner, I mean, you got funerals that happen here. Our charter center walks the big buggy down the road, you know, there's just a lot going on. I think that to have liquor isn't is not necessary at this point, we have enough places to go.
Others? Can we go, I don't know if.
Cindy came one west on the street, I'm not an abutter, but I wanna speak out as a private citizen in support of the convenience store adding the uh the beer and the beer wine, wine and malt, whatever it is, the uh to the to the license. Um, I live directly next door to the the old store, which uh many people may be aware that it's only been closed for two years. Um, it closed on COVID, and um I think that it's the only other convenience store in town that had, was selling here. And when Steve owned it, they had, he had, it was a bustle, I mean, lots of that. And I I think there's a big comparison between the brick store and this this convenience store.
Okay, thank you, I'm gonna keep on going, only because it's five till seven.
We have a meeting at seven.
We have a meeting at seven.
Is this gonna be suspended so that we can?
We're trying to get through it.
Well, I I think it's important, we don't have another, there is no other place to buy the beer and wine. This convenience store, it's an important part of the convenience store business. They they have all the same things that the brick store had, except for the the beer and the small alcohol. Um, the amount of traffic is different than what would be after, which is Westbound.
So I I gotta just document, Cindy, just first of all, you spoke to Steve, I knew Steve very well for many, many years. I gotta be very careful what I say here, but you had a lot of issues with that place being there, so.
Okay, we can't.
But just, just so.
I'm gonna formally request that this hearing be suspended until after the other meetings so that we can continue it. So that you you're attacking me now.
I didn't attack anyone. I didn't attack anyone.
And this has nothing to do with it. I care to support this store getting a legal license and you allowed a butter to speak against it, and now you're.
You're not in the bottom, you're not in the bottom.
Now, remember, the public, this is a public hearing, you don't have to be in a butter to speak at this meeting. I am a parent, and I think if you deny the license to this this store, they may have legal action against the town for for doing it, and no way to speak it undone.
We brought the point that you supported, is there any other, um, anyone else that would like to speak either for or against?
Yeah, something you will say quickly.
Um, the applicants would like the opportunity to add this, these two additional products lines. Um, we have thought about the traffic issues that have been raised. Um, the issue of people consuming beverages and littering with them is welcome. So um I can appreciate that. So in response to that, there'd be no consumption of this, these beverages unless they were outside of these premises. And if they were there consumed, they're consuming public, and so there are regulations of that. And we feel that as businesses grow and become established as they have now for the history of the business, it's been over ten years, they've operated it well, I think that they would appreciate the approval of this license so that they could add these products and hopefully gain additional revenue and prosper. With regard to the traffic, um, we have thought about that, we have some ideas about it, but being a state highway and a town road, thinking about making Brooklyn Street one-way.
We have some shared streets and spaces, we have a drawing that was done for that exact intersection because of the cut through which we could talk about.
Yeah, so.
Chaz, do you have questions? And it is seven.
I I just feel that we need to do this, um, this issue do justice, justice, and I don't think we have the time to really do this, so I I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing to a to a later later time, so that we can allow everybody to.
Are you available for now? Okay, is there a second?
It needs to be to a date in time certain.
So let's go with um August twenty-seventh, is that Wednesday?
August.
Oh, no. April, I probably K in my head. April twenty-seventh, next week, Wednesday, are you guys available next Wednesday?
Yeah.
All right, so um and I I scheduled a meeting for six P M. So should we do this first at six P M? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to continue. Um, and the continuation will be to four twenty-seven at six P M. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Oh, yes, and at this point, I wanna continue.
Just give me a couple minutes.
Yeah.
It's actually live, too.
Yeah, it will be. Um, it's, it will be in meeting room two next week, and it will be on soon. All right, meeting room two downstairs, right away, on soon. And in person, and on soon.
Okay.
I already have them, so, okay, thank you.
I just, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
I would like to just take a minute to thank the board for the opportunity to work in with Chaz, Veronica, Ross. It was an absolute pleasure for the past past fifteen months to work with such a professional group of people. Chaz, you've gone above and beyond what I would ever expect of a board of selectmen. Veronica, I don't know how you've held it together as well as you have with everything that we've gone through. Ross, you've came in and you've really been, in my opinion, a savior for myself. I'm sure the other board members feel that way. However, the town is moving in a very positive direction. I just wanna personally thank you for allowing me to be part of the team. I wanna thank the citizens of the Town of Townsend for trusting me to be the selectman for the remainder of this, the um year that I took over. And I just want everyone to know, if we wanna keep a positive movement going with the board of selectmen, I highly recommend votes Alisa Lee Juan, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Joe. We enjoyed the time.
I make a motion that we adjourn to selectman's meeting.
Um, seconds? All those in favor?
Shank, yes.
Seven oh three, Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica, yes, thank you.
Ross, thank you very much.
We will stay in touch.
Chaz, I probably will see you, but thank you.
You'll need to fix my Jeep.